Okay, we are live. Okay, so tonight for the stream, we are not going to be playing any live poker. I started my $1,000 Bankroll Challenge last night and got absolutely crushed. So to... I don't know, go back to the basics and I guess, I don't want to say learn about poker game, but find out where I was making some errors. I lost quite a bit of money last night in my Bankroll Challenge. I was doing pretty good before that, but need some improvement. So I've got a poker program called Poker Snowy that uses artificial intelligence to either analyze your hands, to let you know how you're playing versus a GTO style of poker. Game theory optimized. So it's just one version of playing poker. There's an exploitive way which you know you need to take into consideration too. But I need to get back to the basics, make sure that I'm playing good solid poker and then work on my exploitive game after that. So tonight what we're going to do with Poker Snowy is do a practice, a mock cash game. And then I see with Poker Snowy is that with the two cards that you're dealt and the situation that you're at, it will let you know what your best move is. Whether you should fold, call or raise. And if you are going to raise, how much that raise should be. So it's just a really good training tool that I use to reiterate, to reinforce the decisions I am making, whether they are the correct positive EV decisions or if I'm making blunders and giving away my money. Obviously last night I made a lot of blunders, gave away a lot of money. So I need to get back and retrain myself, get back to the basics and learn some fundamentals of solid poker play. So without further ado, let's get right into Poker Snowy. Um, there we go. So this is the Poker Snowy program. And just to give you a brief description, brief overlay of it, on the left hand side here. Actually, let's start on the main Poker Snowy poker table. Uh, here we go. Let's look at the right monitor. So here you can set up a game nine-handed, which is pretty typical for a poker game. All computer AI. You get your dealt your two cards, fold, call, raise. Your different preset, quarter pot, half pot, full pot, all-in. But the important part here on the left-hand side, based on the cards that you're dealt, the position you're in and what's happened before you. It's going to let you know if you need to fold, call or raise. Um, and obviously you can see here with the first hand, Jack 2 with a pre-flop raiser. What's that under the gun? Plus 2, plus 3? You know, it's saying you need to fold 100% of the time here. Obviously Jack 2 offsuit, it's if you're playing those cards and you don't know anything about poker. But if you know anything about poker, you're obviously folding Jack 2. So we're just going to play a whole bunch of hands tonight and um I will uh, I will have a look on the left-hand side here to see what the appropriate play is and also comment on what I, what I would have done if this was an actual cash game. To kind of see if the calls and plays that I'm making are what a true GTO basic fundamental poker strategy should be. So okay, enough talking, let's play some cards. So Jack 2, we're going to fold. Nice thing is it automatically puts you right to the next hand, which just like in Zoom poker online does the same thing. So Jack 3 of course, even suited, still folding this. 10-6 is going to be a fold. Okay, so this is interesting. A6 suited. Okay, uh, under the gun. It's saying I should fold 68% of the time and raise 32% of the time. Now both are zero EV plays, which means in the long run, I'm not going to lose any money, not going to win any money. Uh, calling is a bad option here. So A6 suited. Some of the time you should raise in this position, most of the time you should fold. So we're going to fold. Also 2 up here, it's going to show me this session's score. So I'm playing at a 10 cent, 20 cent blind table. Uh, so we'll see if we follow the GTO strategy, if we're going to actually make money over a couple of hundred hands. I'm hoping to play, I don't know, maybe we can play 1,000 hands tonight, we will see. Uh, okay, 8-7 offsuit, under the gun, fold. We played 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Yeah, we were playing my hand. Alright, so we had a early position raise. I'm in the big blind. Uh, ace is nice, offsuit 6, low kicker, still fold. Why is my watch buzz? Well, notifications. Alright, queen 6 offsuit, fold. A6 offsuit, I'm guessing we're going to have to fold this one too, even under the button. Yep, fold. Ace 8, probably still going to be a fold. This is interesting. I would have normally folded here, which 10% of the time it's saying I should, but 90% of the time I should raise. It's still a zero EV play. So it doesn't matter what I do here, I'm not going to make any money. So I'd rather just fold. Now if you notice here too, it's showing me my pot size. If I am going to raise, it's saying the best thing for me to do is raise pot size. So the pot is 30. So I need to put in 30 cents for the call, plus I need to add an additional 30 cents to make it a pot size bet. So I go pot. Oh, pot size 70 cents. Oh yeah, sorry. So uh, the big blind is 20 cents. So if I'm calling 20 cents, that's going to make the pot 50 cents. And then I'm calling the pot, which is only 20 cent blind. Okay, that doesn't make any sense. Why is pot 70 cents? 20 cents to call, and I guess another 20 cents for the raise? Yeah, we'll figure that out later. Alright, so we're going to fold that. A6 suited, I'll probably raise this. Yeah, so it's a small EV play. But if it's folded around to you in late position, because I'm only one off, so what's that, the cutoff hijack position? It's a small EV play about 100% of the time. If it's folded around to you in late position, A6 suited, we need to raise, we need to raise half a pot. I'm trying to figure out how you get 45 cents on half pot. So half a pot is 15 cents. Oh, okay, so pot size bet is 30, plus 15 cents, which is half pot. Okay, that makes sense now. Sorry, I've had too much wine already. Alright, am I leaning in too much here? Sit back a little bit. Okay. Uh, so where are we here? A6, we are going to raise half pot. So this is nice, on the flop, queen, jack, 8 rainbow. It is saying we should check 56% of the time, bet the other 44. If we are going to bet, we need to bet pot size. So they're both exact same EV play. Um, if I was at a cash table, I would c-bet. So we're going to c-bet pot. Yeah, pot's a dollar. So we will bet, pot size, we get raised. Okay. So, I mean, I got nothing, which is a c-bet. So we're going to fold to aggression. That's what I would probably do in a real cash game as well. We fold. You can see this session's hand, we're already down a buck 75, but we're still learning on. So we'll keep playing. Jack 2, obviously that's a fold. What do we got here? I don't know, I can't see it on my glasses on. So um, you don't want watching? Yeah, we got a second viewer, hey, look at that. So, a little note about me. I got near-perfect vision in my right eye. I can see on my computer screen that's king 9. If I go like this, can't see anything. I have to zoom in to there to see the king 9. That's why I gotta wear glasses. So king 9, fold, a call and a raise massively negative EV, because we had a raiser in front of us, so out of this hand. Next hand, 8-10, it's going to be a fold. 4-2 is going to be a fold. King 6, so folded to me. So Jack 5, small blind with a raise, can be a fold. Yep. Pocket 9's in the dealer button. It's going to be raise. We're going to make a pot size raise. Pot size is going to be, should be 60 cents, right? Why is it 70? Pot's 30 cents. So how's a pot size raise 70? I don't understand that. I'm going to have to Google this later. If you're watching this right now and you know this, throw it in the chat. Or if you're watching on YouTube, throw it in the comment section. I don't understand how a pot size raise is 70 cents. I don't understand this, but anyways. Obviously pocket 9's in the dealer button with the fold around to you. 9's a strong hand, we are raising pot size bet. First. Alright, 2 overcards. It's saying I should check 23% of the time and bet a quarter pot 77% of the time. What I've noticed with this GTO strategy, it likes small bets. Especially when you're not dominating a hand, like pocket 9's with 2 overcards. Um, a small c-bet like this. Obviously if your villain, your opponent has ace or king, they're going to call or raise you. And if they got nothing, even your quarter size pot bet is going to let them know, hey, I'm representing an ace or king. And if they've got whatever 10-9, they're going to fold. So we're going to make a quarter size pot bet. They call. So that's not good news for us, that means they've got something. So here it's saying check 100% of the time. Now betting half a pot, we're saying never do that, but it's still a positive EV play if you bet. But it's just more positive EV if you check. So 100% of the time we should check. They check back. Now we got some aggression from them, they're betting, obviously they got something. We're absolutely annihilated in this hand. And yeah, in real cash game, I'd be folding this as well. Yeah, fold. Alright, ace 9 offsuit, maybe, no. I was going to say maybe a raise if it gets folded around to us. But another thing too with the GTO strategy, if there's a raise ahead of you, your range for calling a pre-flop raiser is pretty tight. So if someone's raising ahead of you, you better have a premium hand. Ace 9 like this, not going to work. 10-7 is a fold obviously. Queen 3 is going to be a fold, no. King 10. Again, open raise possibly, calling an open raise, not going to happen. 5-4, under the gun. Oh wait, there's someone here. Or UTT plus 1, I didn't see that there, Snowy 4. Um, yep. Folding 100% of the time here. Uh, Jack 8 is going to be a fold. Queen off, fold around to me. 8-3 of diamonds in the small blind with under the gun raise. So obviously if they're raising under the gun, they've got a strong hand. Aces, kings, queens, ace, king, ace, queen, they've got a strong hand. 8-3, we're dominated, we fold. 6-2, fold. No, even in the dealer button position, king 2 is going to be a fold, especially with a raiser, yep. 9-7 offsuit, fold. 10-4 is going to be a fold, yep. 9-7 is going to be a fold. Queen 2 is going to be a fold. Ace 8, under the gun, 4% of the time we should raise. The half pot raise. Um, and 98%, 96% of the time we need to fold, so. I would, in a cash game, I may, I don't know, under the gun, I wouldn't play this, no, that's right. 8-4 of diamonds in the big blind. Yeah, no. Boy, we've been pretty cut, 34 hands so far. This is interesting. Okay, so I got folded around to me, I'm in the small blind. Suited one gapper. Call 76% of the time, raise 24% of the time. So it's saying we should raise pot. So generally when I'm in the small blind, I like raising. It's either a raise or fold option for me, because post-flop, your first act, and I hate being out of position post-flop. So I'm going to raise pot and hope they fold. There, see? King 3 is going to be a fold. 6-3 is going to be a fold. Yep. Queen 4 is going to be a fold. 10-7 is going to be a fold. Wow, this is just a real board, but real poker. Okay. Even suited connectors with a pre-flop raiser, fold. 4-7, oh. 9-2 is going to be a fold. Ace 9 in the big blind. Hmm. So the small blind just calls, which leads me to believe they are weak. Because if they had a decent hand, they'd raise. So you can call 7% of the time. It's saying you should raise that if you're 93% of the time. Now, the expected EV is the same. But with Snowy 4 here showing weakness, raising a pot size, okay. My math is correct, pot size should be 40 cents, right? 60, so it's got to be pot plus. So pot size bet is pot plus the big blind? That's how I see it. Um, I would raise here if I was playing a real cash game, because they're showing weakness, might be an easy steal. Yeah, they would fold. Hmm. Okay, if it was folded around to me, I would raise. But with a pre-flop raiser on the button, even though his range is pretty wide open, 10, Jack's pretty good. I would almost give a call in this spot. It's saying here, fold 100% of the time. Okay, queen 7 is going to be a fold. Yeah. Ace 7 is going to be a fold, especially with a free flop raiser. Ace 2 is going to be a fold. Yeah. Now I can fold it anytime, see this lightning? I can fold anytime, I don't have to wait for this to pop up. But for this stream and for this video, I'm going to wait every time. So pocket 10's in mid-position, that's definitely going to be a raise, so a half pot. Yeah, so half pot's going to be... See here, this makes sense, half pot's 30 plus 15. So why is the pot 70? I'm going to figure this out. So pot size bet's going to be 70, so it's 30. Pot's 30. I haven't figured that out yet. I don't. I should know this, but it's confusing me. Alright, so anyways, it's saying that I should make a half pot. So you can actually change this. See? If I make a 2-pot bet size, my expected EV is 0.36. If I make a half pot, it's 0.55, which means I'll probably get more action. So you can actually see with the different pot sizes, with the different, uh, yeah, pot size bets will yield you. Again, this is just strictly GTO, game theory optimized. You're not considering how aggressive or loose or tight the player is. This is a strictly GTO, which in a Zoom game, uh, where when you fold, you get new hands right away, just like what we're doing here. Uh, you don't really get a read on your opponents, because they're not playing a traditional cash table where you fold and you wait for the next hand. Um, so I find that Zoom online poker um, is more a GTO style, where it's just mass volume and uh, players folding until they get a premium hand or a good hand. So a GTO strategy works more for Zoom poker than it would for tournaments or cash games where you could play a little more exploitive. But usually by default, you play GTO and then you play in exploitative manner when you know you can exploit someone's game style once you get enough hands against them. Anyways, enough talking, raise half pot. Pocket 10. Good, we see a flop. I'm pretty good pre-flop, I know what cards to play and not play. It's post-flop that I have problems with. So you got an ace on the river, ace on the flop. Um, it was checked to me. 83% of the time I should check back, probably because of this ace. 17%. So what we're going to do, just for argument's sake, tonight, we're going to follow whatever the highest percentage is going to be. I would probably bet this in a real game. Um, but tonight, just to stay to a strict GTO style and see how profitable I can be, I'm going to follow, you know, if it's 51% check, 49% bet, I will check. So in this instance, saying the majority of the time, check. Now we got another overcard. Not looking good for us. Although they're checking behind 2. So betting still is a positive EV play, but it's saying it's more positive EV in the long run. By checking again, okay, now we got 3 hearts. Check 100% of the time. So I'm guessing they've got... Well, then they're big blind. They could have anything, they could have a raise pre-flop. I don't know, they could probably call with like, you know, king, queen. Uh... 79. Yeah, they got probably a Broadway card and a bad kicker. There it is, king 7, there we go. Broadway card on a bad kicker. Alright, queen 2, fold. Here are jacks. 100% of the time you should raise, of course, even in early position. Jacks are strong, saying raise quarter pot. Well, I don't have quarter pot here and I don't, or 0.4 of a pot, sorry. Um... The half pot's 45, so 30, yeah, plus 15. So 0.4 is going to be 42 cents. So 0.42. There you go. Why it's 0.4 and not 0.5, I don't know. But everybody folds around to us. 9-3s can be a fold. Uh, Jack 6 can be a fold. No. Even in the big blind. It'll only cost me 20 cents more to see a flop. Good pot odds, but Jack 6, no good. Jack 2 suited. Alright, see, normally I would fold here. Saying I should call, which is something I never do in the big, in the small blind, but... So Jack 2, small blind, suited. Okay, I'll call. Uh... Yeah, out of position, I would check. Yeah, 100% check, yep. Check back. I would still check here. Yeah, it's not a good board for me. Big blind probably hit 6 or 4. Yeah. So... Alright, they may have hit a queen, they may have hit a 4. When you're checking to the big blind, they could have any 2 cards. Fold, get out of that one. Hmm. The best starting hand in poker, right? Fold. Uh, king 8. Uh, pre-flop raiser, I don't know if we got it, I'll fold. Line 5 is going to be a fold. Queen Jack's probably going to, I was going to say it'd be a raise, but no. Well, we raise 4% of the time. So even in middle position, queen, jack, offsuit, fold. Six will be a fold. Five, 9's going to be a fold. Line 3 is going to be a fold. 6-2 in the big blind. Now, guys. So I'm terrible 2 cards. Uh, early position raise, late position call. No profit play here except just to fold. Hmm, there's a raise, so we're going to fold. This will be interesting, ace 9. Ah-ha! So obviously if there was a raiser ahead of us, we'd be folding. But it got folded around to us from the dealer button. So we're going to raise pot, which you gain a 70 cents, which I don't understand. Pot's 30, where does the extra dime come from? Uh, so we're probably doing 2 things here. One, trying to steal the blinds. Two, ace 9, not a fan of his hand, but... Hmm, okay, we will raise. And then we re-raise out of the big blind. So interesting here, it's saying if we re-raise again, 4% of the time, but... No, we're going to fold here. I mean, they're re-raising, they're 3 betting essentially with a really good hand. Unless they're bluffing, but which is possible. We'll fold. 10-7 is going to be a fold. 10-8 is going to be a fold. Oh, 10-7 suited. Still going to be a fold. 4-3. Missed one, fold, oh, it's too... Oh, I bet. It's going to be a fold. Jack 8. Uh, 8-7, big blind with a raise and a re-raise. So there you go. If you call or raise in this scenario, you're going to lose 10 chips for every 1 you put in there. I put in a dollar, I'm going to lose 10. I raise, I'm going to lose 12 for every dollar I put in. Alright, ace 7, small blind with a free flop raiser, it's going to be a fold. Here we go. Alright, so this is exactly why I've got this training program. So, I mean, this happens to us a lot. We get dealt ace, king, big slick, we're in the dealer button, and someone raised before us. They raised middle position. We should raise 3 bets 100% of the time. I'm sure this would be different if it was an early position raise, but this is a mid-position raise. Okay, so it's saying we should raise pot. So pot's 80 cents. So if I click pot, it's a dollar 80. I gotta figure out what the hell that means. Tell us a pot-sized bet a dollar eighty. Okay, so it's eighty cents for me to call. And then a dollar to raise? I gotta figure this out later. Anyways, pot-sized bet is gonna be a buck eighty, so we're gonna follow old Poker Snowy, which we'll just, we'll just call Snowy. Maybe we're one. Uh ten-six suited, fold. Queen three, guess what? Fold. Hmm. We've been in this spot before. Uh middle position, queen, jack, offsuit. Fold. Jack four is gonna be a fold. Well now, we all know what to do here. So interesting, bet sizing, which is extremely important in GTO poker. Point four of a pot is the suggested bet size. You see, this is interesting. Point four of a pot. Beagle! Does she really want in here?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Uh point four, the EV is six point oh five. Obviously with aces, it's a very profitable hand. Not for pots even more. Look, six point four-two. Six point six-five. So why is this suggesting a point four? That's the best EV play. Hmm. Okay, so pot size. Oh, I think I got this figured out. So pot-sized bets can be seventy cents, so that's thirty times the last bet, times two. So thirty plus the last bet, which is fifty, plus that bet size, which is another, that's seventy. I may have this figured out. Anyways, even though it's saying point four is Poker Snowy's advice, I'm going pot-sized because the EV is even higher. Oh, I went fold and shoot. Maybe that's why the point four. Ah, maybe that's why. Maybe you get a little more action. Okay, here he's fold. Ten-three, uh big blind, that's a fold. Ten-jack suited. What would you do with a pre-flop raiser? Oh, I would call. Man, no wonder I'm losing money. You know, uh with this GTO program, the Snowy program, if you're not the open raiser, you're only calling with like frickin' aces or kings. Okay. This is interesting. Alright, so no matter what we do here, EV is pretty close. Folded around to me, in the cutoff. Yes, this makes sense. So thirty, which is the pot. Yes, I need twenty cents to call the raise. Twenty cents to raise them and then thirty cents for the, yeah, we get seventy cents. That makes sense now. Oh, they re-raised out of the small blind. Hmm, okay. Fold, ace six, gonna be a fold. Yep. Uh five-four suited. Wasn't this interesting? So under the gun, min-raise. And it's saying I should call with five-four. How is raising, three-betting with five-four a profitable? Alright, you know what I think? And please, if you're watching, type in the chat. I'm monitoring the chat. I'm watching the chat. You're seeing this. My guess, under the gun, they're gonna min-raise with a premium hand. Ace, king, ace, queen. Aces, you'd think they'd do more than a min-raise, but maybe with five-four, it's a bit of a bluff, not a bluff catcher, but you know, if a flop comes, you know, seven-five, say, yeah, seven-five-four or seven-five-two. Maybe it's with their ace, king, but I hit with my five. Hmm. Interesting. Alright, so pot-sized bet should be seventy cents. But so pot-sized bet, my guess is gonna be seventy plus forty cents plus forty cents, so a dollar fifty. Oh, I got it right. Okay, I gotta figure it out. Alright, gotta figure it out. They re-raised me. Huh. Alright, well, Mr. Poker Snowy, after eighty-four hands, I've lost five dollars following your advice. Ace nine suited. I would normally raise. Yep, raise point four of a pot. Uh so point four of a pot. I don't know, I can't do the math. Close to half pot, close enough. Hmm. Okay, this is interesting. As we poker players are put in this position a lot. Medium pocket pair. Under the gun. Now, you can see here, fold, call, raise, EV is pretty much all the same. So best here to fold is calling or raising in the long run isn't gonna win you any money. Nothing more than fold. So if you get sevens under the gun, I gain GTO strategy, not exploitive. Fold, wait for the next hand. So I get put in this position a lot. I get the sevens a lot or mid-pairs, fold. Beagle, you're making a lot of noise down there. Bailey. Yeah, you're making a lot of noise down there. Chewing a bone. Uh queen three, now I'm out of here, fold. Eight-four suited. Ooh, it's suited. I can get a flush. No, fold. Ace-six in the dealer button. Ah, they raised ahead of me. Basically, anytime you get a raise, if you're calling a raise, you better have a good hand. Now, we haven't been given cards yet. I wanna see if I've got like, um, let's say pocket tens. And I get a raised before, what do I do? I'm gonna come that spot. Jack-three is gonna be a fold. Ten-five, fold. Alright, so last orbit, we got dealt pocket sevens. And it said fold. Well, obviously pocket five. So under the gun, we're gonna need something better than sevens. Yep. Queen two is gonna be a fold. Let's see, it's fold, you said they called. Yeah, so this is not a really good hand. Check hundred percent of the time. Yeah. Uh Check to me, check back, got nothing. Yep, check. I got a gut shot. Ten-jack, queen. I got, actually, I got a, sorry, not a gut shot. I got an open-ended straight draw. Ace or a nine completes. So I got uh four, I got eight outs. So I got about seventeen, eighteen percent chance of hitting what's this thing I do here? Bet seventy-six percent of the time. So I got check to me on the turn, pot-sized bet. So pot-sized can be forty cents. So because I've got an open-ended draw and it was checked on the flop, checked at the turn, and I fold. So when you got outs, it's almost like a semi-bluff. Okay. Uh jack-seven. Call or raise is both the same EV, but it's saying I should raise fifty-seven percent of the time. I should make a pot-sized raise. Alright, so if math is correct, pot-sized raise is going to be thirty plus two big blinds, that's seventy cents. This time it's sixty. Oh, cuz I got ten cents in there already. Uh okay, totally whiff on the flop. Normally I would see, oh wait, now I got middle pick. Whoa, wait, hang on a second here. I thought I didn't miss. I've got top pair. Why would I check? I mean, betting, betting half pot. Yeah, betting half pot is almost the same EV as checking. So c-betting is not a bad option. But I guess because I'm out of position? Yeah, probably because of my position. So if I was in position and I got checked to me, I'd be raising, but out of position, check. Yeah, see, they make a bet. Would call. Yeah, I would call. Yeah, cuz I'm only beat by a three or a better kicker with a seven or a higher pocket pair. That's not a good card for us. Okay, check. They checked back. So you can see by these EV numbers, I'm in a really good position right now. Uh I got third pair. And I'd be pretty nervous in this spot, but we're gonna check. They checked. Now they had nothing. Okay, king eight's gonna be a fold. Eight-four's gonna be a fold. See, this is nice. It just the program, when you play sessions like this, um it just resets or re-emphasizes those fundamentals that you've got in your head. So when you're at a real live game or online, you can instinctively make those decisions um by the practice that you've been doing. You know, much like sports players, when they they practice before game, they, it's all to reemphasize those fundamentals so that in a live game, when you've got ten or fifteen seconds to make your, your decision, that that instinct is there to know what to do. And that's where this Poker Snowy program and, I mean, I'm sure there's other programs out there too, but these programs just reset and reemphasize those instincts. So when I see ace nine, I go, you know what? It's not suited, it's early position, it's a fold. You know, where you're not sitting there going, oh, what should I do? Is this a call? Is this a raise? Should I fold? I don't know. You get those instincts built into you. You know, and if you play hundreds and thousands of hands like this, like king-ten, big blind, call. See? Yep, call. Like you're just instinctively know what to do and using programs like this just reemphasizes those instincts or resets those instincts. Maybe I was making bad calls before. And it just gives you that different instinct, that different feeling to go, hey, you know what? Yep, king-ten suited, even with a mid, yes, a mid-position raise. I'm in the big blind, it's only costing me thirty cents more. Okay, I think he here would raise. Yeah, no, call. Okay. So out of position, uh I mean, you always, always check to the pre-flop raiser, and that's what it's saying here. So check. They check. Alright, now I got top pair. Really good kicker, but there is a straight and a flush on the board. So there's a five, six, seven, ten. Oh geez. So six, seven, if he's got eight, nine, he beats me? Uh three, four? Two hearts? So it's a very wet board. So it's interesting that Poker Snowy out of position, I'm saying I should bet. Now, he was the pre-flop raiser. He did check on the flop, so he gave up that lead. So now with me with top kicker, the top kicker, top pair with good kicker, it's saying I should take over that lead with a quarter-sized pot. This, this GTO thing really likes these small bets. So pot's a dollar-ten. I'm just throwing in twenty-eight cents, you know, to lead out and, and tell my opponent, hey, I've got something. And if you've got absolute nothing, time for you to fold. But if they call or they raise me, I guess this is information bet. I bet twenty-eight cents to get some information. Okay, they called. Not a good sign. Ace comes out, time to check it down. Yep, here, ninety-two percent check. So if they had a flush or a straight, you would think they would re-raise you. Yeah, they would have re-raised you. So hmm, he checked the flop, called the turn. Maybe he's got one heart? Or he's got five, six, seven, eight? Maybe he needs one more card to complete his draw? Yeah. In real game, I would definitely be checking. Pocket queens. See, one thing I don't like about this program, though, I can't go back and do the last hand, but it's just by text. So he had pocket queens. Which, not until the turn when the ace showed up. Okay, but pocket queens with the wet board, with the straight on the board and a potential flush. So he was scared with the pocket queens that I had him beat. Okay, so that makes sense. Interesting. I did lose that hand. Okay, ace-six in the small line. Uh Yeah, this makes sense. A pot-sized bet, which when you're in the small blind, cuz you've already put ten cents in, it's gonna be sixty cents. Yep. Um you only got one more opponent. You know, chances he has ace are better. So if he's got pocket twos are better, or ace-seven or red, he's got me beat. Chances are he doesn't, so I'm gonna go pot-sized bet. And he folds. Queen three is gonna be a fold. King-five? Wasn't for that raise, we probably would be playing, but you're gonna fold. Uh raise ahead of us, fold. Uh, raise ahead of us, fold. 2 9s definitely gonna be a fold. Jack 10 might be, not, was a raise in front of us. Fold. Jack 6 is gonna be a fold. 6 3 in the big blind? Yep, definitely a fold. 10 2, even if he gets folded around to me, you're not playing this. Nope. Okay, ace-jack. Okay, this is good. Cuz I've been in this, in this spot lately quite a bit, ace-jack, it's a good hand, but it's not. So we had an under-the-gun raise, we had a late-position call. You know, ace-jack looks real sexy, I like that hand. Yeah, call or a raise? Pretty massive negative EV. That's a fold, ace-jack even in position with a raiser and a caller. Right, it's the, the under-the-gun raise. You know, you only raise under the gun with a premium hand, so ace queen, ace king. Pocket Queens, pocket Kings, pocket aces. So ace-jack, you're thoroughly dominated, and then you got a caller as well. Alright, and what are they calling with? Ace-king, ace-queen, pocket pair? So ace-jack, if I got folded around to you, pretty sure it'd be a raise. Open raise, but with some aggression ahead of you, toss that ace-jack. Queen 2, we're gonna throw that to the garbage. Here we go, ace-king. Gets folded around to you, that's an easy raise, we're asking for a half-pot raise. I would probably raise pot. Which, is it 1.16? Hmm, EV drops quite a bit. From 1.37 to 1.1, to under 1. So, mid-position, actually it's almost late-position, ace-king, half-pot. So it's just a little bit more than min-raise. Probably because you've only got a few people behind you to act, you want some action with ace-kings. And this is perfect. We get a re-raise, so we wanna call this 100% of the time, so... Uh, they're 3 betting. With aces, kings, queens, jacks, maybe even tens. They might have ace-king, I don't think they're 3 betting with ace-queen. So we're up against a pretty strong hand, they don't have 2s, they don't have 5s. Hmm. Interesting. So ace-king offsuit with a flop like this, you totally whiff. They bet out of position. Now I'm thinking they've got like a premium pocket pair, tens, jacks, queens. Probably don't have kings or aces, cuz I blocked them here. But it's in call. There's 3 aces left on the deck, 3 kings, there's 3 6s. So I got like a 25% chance of hitting an ace or a king, I'm saying I should still call. Yeah? Now they're making a pot-sized bet. I probably would have folded back on the flop. Cuz I had nothing, I mean, you totally whiff on this board. Okay, we'll fold. Deuce 5, hmm, raise? Not a chance. 5 9 is gonna be a fold. 9 7's gonna be a fold. So look at this, after 122 hands, we're down 6 bucks. If you're even playing perfect GTO poker against perfect GTO opponents, you still lose money, so that's how hard it is to win in poker. You need to block. Uh, 8 9 suited, under the gun, you know, it's an attractive hand, but 10 7 offsuit's gonna be a fold. Yeah. Small blind, 4 9 offsuit. Not touching this one. 7 4. Nope. 2 3 offsuit, no. Jack 6, nope. 7 8? Nope. Okay. Ace-queen suited, very strong hand, half-pot-sized bet. 30 plus 15. Still 100% on that. Um... Yeah. Okay. Raise, that would be a re-raise. So if you got ace-queen suited, and you get 3 bets from late position, what do you do? You call 86% of the time. Ace-queen suited, you call a 3 bet. Wow! Alright, so snowy 6 was the pre-flop aggressor, we always check to the pre-flop aggressor. Let them make their first move. They bet, uh, quarter-pot. Alright, this is why I like this program. I'm gonna raise quarter-pot 54% of the time. Half-pot? Nope. So a small, plus anyway, a small quarter-pot's gonna be... They bet 90. It's like 2 and 1/2 times their bet size? With 2 diamonds on the board, I would probably... I would definitely 3 bet, especially with 2 diamonds on the board, protect your hand against a flush draw. Although I don't think they're betting quarter-pot with a flush draw. I checked to you, yeah, actually they may, they might be on a flush draw. Yeah, so quarter-pot. How's this quarter-pot, 225, it's half-pot. I really gotta figure out these bet sizes. I guess this quarter-pot mean... Anyways, um, yes, I would be re-raise, check-raising in this position to protect myself against the flush draw. So, let's raise. Hmm, they called. Now this is interesting, cuz I took over the bet lead. With 2 hearts and 2 diamonds on there, I would be leading out with a bet. Which, I mean, snowy's saying check 100% of the time, but betting is still a really strong positive EV play. Yeah, see here? So if I'm gonna bet half-pot, EV's 12.1. If I bet a quarter-sized pot, yeah, 2.8, this is what I would do, which is interesting why it's saying poker snowy's advice is half-pot, but I would go quarter-sized to protect myself against the 2 draws. And you call. What are you calling with? Ah, another flush draw out there. Hmm. I'd be checking in this spot. Ace 10, interesting. Hmm. 3 6 is a fold, 6 8 is a fold. 2 9 is a definite fold. 6 is a fold. Bucket 3s in the dealer button. With a bunch of aggression ahead of you. We're folding this for sure. Ace 2 suited. Oh my god, I was about to fold. Okay. Why are we raising with ace 2? Are we bluffing with this hand, is that what we're doing? So pot-sized bet is the 80 cents that's already on the pot. Calling the raise, and then raising the raise. That's how it does. Okay, snowy sees raise. Snowy's a raise. 7 6, fold. And Jack 9 is a fold. Give me 1 sec here, I'm gonna type out something. Ace-king, good hand, 1 sec! Just 1? Yeah, just 1. Okay. Alright, obviously we're raising. And most EV positive. What do you like? Quarter-pot? Minus, yeah, need to raise... Raise pot. So... Whew. I don't have COVID, I, I promise you. Just for sniffles, okay, so, uh, pot-sized bet is going to be the 70 cents, plus the 40, plus the raise of 40 above you. I got that figured out now. Oh, so there's some action. And will you look at that, after 139 hands, we're finally back into the black. So if you play GTO strategy long enough, over thousands of hands, you will start making money, that's the whole idea. So, okay, bucket 6s under the gun, just like 7s. Fold, call, raise. You know, EV's pretty much the same, so best just to fold and wait for a better hand. What, 7 3? Not. Ace 4 with a pre-flop aggressor? Not playing that. 6s under the button? Still not. Razors, no. King 6 for the raise, nope. Ayayay, spelling, 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 and tell me where you are. Watching from my car. English was not my first language. Queen 6 fold. Um... When I was born, my folks spoke Italian to me. I didn't start speaking English until I went to school. It was really hard, cuz for the first 5 years, I spoke Italian to my folks, and then they sent me off to kindergarten. And no one, I couldn't understand anyone. And they could not understand me, and I was really confused, and even as a 5-year-old, I remember being confused, going, "Why can I, I cannot communicate with anyone?" Yeah, thanks, Mom and Dad. I hold no resentment. Okay, queen 4, this is interesting. Queen 4 suited. You know, and I, uh, I'll agree with this. Pot-sized bet. Um... Small blind, it's either raise or fold. So if you had a suited Broadway card, seems that, likes to hit a raise. They get re-raised by the big blind. Guess I should have folded. Ace 5 with a aggressor, nope. 5 6 suited, nope. King 8, nope. 4 3, maybe, maybe, nope. Jack 9, no. Ace 8, everyone likes those aces, but with the bad kicker. Not going anywhere with that. Same with the suited, not suited. Even disconnecters, not even suited connect, no, bye. Queen 3 suited. Even in the big blind. 5 3? Nope. 7 3, definitely not. Queen 9? No. 10 4, suited, no. King 2? Oh, was a raise. Wonder why the EV was solo? King 6? Ooh. 10 2, no. King 9, no. Okay, king-queen, possible playable hand. Unless it gets folded all the way to you. Ace 2? Uh, under the gun raiser, nope. Sorry, uh, focus, fold. Ace 5 suited. A raise, 3 bet, not going anywhere near. You Broadway cards, can you go wrong? Absolutely. Bet you one of those raisers ahead of you, you get out of the way. Queen-Jack, okay. Oh, I would play this. Again, a raise, not terribly minus EV, I guess not a not a terrible raise. Look at this. So if I raise half-pot, I lose .04. But if I raise .4 of a pot? Interesting. Alright, .4 of a pot is 0.42. And it's slight positive EV. So if I make a small bet, barely above mid-raise. It could be a profitable play, just like that. Yeah, see, here again. I wonder why... Why is a half-pot... Why is a half pot EV point oh one, quarter pot point oh seven, but it's still suggesting half pot? Okay, something I can think of is that on future streets, by raising half pot, you potentially could win more by the river. Only reasoning I can see. It's point four. Saying it's much more possible. But yet, poker snowy's advice is half pot. I don't know. Still learning the program. Oh, about three bets, yeah. Massive three bets. Bye-bye. King three suited. Oh, I can get a flush. No, 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 no. Oh, that bad kicker. Nope, nope, nope. Nine four suited. No. Ten nine. Okay. See that? Point four pot. Way more EV. One pot. Why would it suggest one pot? I don't know. What would you do in this spot? Nine ten spades, flop comes ace queen clean. It was checked to you. Preflop aggressor. Yeah, so you would c-bet. Yeah, c-bet half pot. Ten jack, folded around to you. Raise half pot. Still doesn't make sense to me. Pot seventy cents, house half pot forty-five. Thirty plus twenty, no. Half pot is fifteen cents plus thirty. Pot is thirty cents plus thirty is sixty, that's seven. So this makes sense. Okay, no raise. What happened here? We got three bets somewhere. It's only five, three bets. Alright, what'd you do there? Oh, what should I do here? Bucket aces. Alright, so the most positive EV play here is what? Two pot? But poker snowy's advice is half pot. Need to find out why they're not going with a most positive EV. Probably because I want some action. If I double pot, I'm gonna lose some action. So let's go a half pot. I agree with the half pot. Someone had to call. Why didn't someone call? Alright, four six, mid position, suited, still no good. Ace two diamonds. Folding, calling and raising, all the same EV. Uh. Think I should raise half pot, so let's do it. Okay, two diamonds, one overcard. Good flop, it was checked to me. Poker snowy is saying make a pot sized bet. Because we're kind of semi-blocking. We have to not flush diamond draws, but diamond hits, we win. Uh, also they're stacked too. They're deep stacked, so we can, we could double up against them. Um, yeah, yeah, we'd be betting pot sized bet here too. Except they fold, we take down the pot. Alright, it's fine. King four, no good. Eight five, no good. Me nine big blind, no good. Yep, no good. Ten two, wow. The brunt's in hand, no good. Eight seven, no, not with all those razors, nope. King eight, no good. Oh. Isn't this a lovely spot to be in? Bucket aces with a preflop razor. A preflop caller. Okay, so. This doesn't make any sense to me. Okay, so pot sized bet. Must be you're putting in the pot, plus with the raises. Well, that doesn't make sense, it's only dollar fifty. Okay, so I'm gonna pot. Pot sized raise. The pot's a dollar ten. Okay, so I need to call the raise. Which is another forty cents. That makes the pot dollar fifty. And then I need to raise what they did? I don't know. Anyways, it's gonna be a never get any actions on those aces. King eight suited. Raise eight percent of the time, change to fold. Ace king, okay, this is a raise. A half pot bet size, pretty good. You have a caller, and we see a flop with two other opponents. Uh, okay, I was the preflop aggressor, so why am I not c-bet? Because we missed the flop. Powerful then. Interesting. Ace six. No good. Ace three, no good. Ace five, fold around to me, no. Seven four, no. King king. Yeah, this is definitely a re-raise. So pot sized bet's going to be the pot, plus the raise, plus another raise. I gotta say poker snowy's a lot tighter than normal players at a table. Ten jack, oh yeah, there's a three bet there, you didn't see that? Ace five, it's tempting, but it's a bad hand. Ace six, again, tempting, bad hand. Jack eight, bad hand. Ah, I need some water, one sec here. Sorry, it's been an hour and a half. It's about something other than wine. King seven. Tempting hand, under the gun, no. No, no, no. Five seven, no. Another bad hand, no. Hmm. So in two and four, two hundred and fourteen hands, we've been dealt pocket aces three times? I think we've had kings three times? So this is a real cash game. See, we're pretty lucky. Normally don't get aces that often. There's just got to be better. There's some treats for me. Um. Yeah, pocket aces, we're always raising. Pot sized bet's gonna be um a dollar thirty? No, dollar eighty. We're gonna put in the eighty. Along with a fifty cents, a razor fifty cents, buck eighty. Minus a ten cents, I already got in there. Don't fold. No. Why am I checking in this spot? It was a preflop aggressor. You'd think you would lead out, especially with two diamonds on the board. Huh. Out of position, check, check. Now we bet? Okay, so this is interesting. I two X for two times pot bet. Not a good idea. One pot seems to be the most positive EV, twenty point eight four, eighteen. Eighteen, so pot sized bet seems to be the best. Thing is here though, and maybe this is why poker snowy's saying point two five. Because you don't want to scare them off. I make a pot sized bet, they're gonna fold the majority of the time. I want to keep my customer around, because I got them beat. I mean, there's a flush draw. But with nine outs, there's eighteen, if I got one in five chance to hit it four or five times, I make a quarter sized bet, I'm gonna, if they call, I'm gonna be able to keep that money one out of five times. That makes sense. Perfect. Well. Six is a little bit dangerous, six, seven, eight, so they could have nine, ten. Would they really call my three bet? In a big blind with nine, ten? I don't think so. They might have a king. Yeah, they don't have two pairs, they don't have king eight or king seven. What would they call my three bet with? King ten? I think they have king and a decent kicker. Alright, so it's poker, a quarter sized bet. So we're making a value bet here. Hoping that they call with a king, king something. Fuck the queens, well. Sweet. Alright, so after two hundred and fifteen hands, we're up almost five dollars now. Um, blinds are ten twenty cents. So five, we're up twenty-five big blinds, right? Twenty cents is a big blind, twenty-five of those means five bucks. So we're up twenty-five big blinds. Two hundred and fifteen hands, so that's uh, about ten big blinds per hunt. Which is a good win rate at a cash game. So following this GTO over the long run, is gonna net you a profit. The nice thing is, if you're playing at a real cash table, especially at the micro stakes games, your opponents definitely don't play perfect. Right now, I'm playing against perfect opponents that don't make mistakes. This artificial intelligence, this poker snowy program, is built and designed that your opponents play perfect poker. If you notice, everybody else at the table is up money, except for snowy three. Everybody started with twenty bucks. No. So they're all playing perfect poker. So if I can make ten big blinds, playing against perfect opponents, and when I'm playing at a real cash game, where real people make really stupid mistakes, especially at the micro stakes, they make really big mistakes, I can make even more. So the hope is, and the idea is to play a GTO strategy, play perfect poker, and then when your opponents make mistakes, your GTO fundamentals will automatically exploit those players, and that's when you make your big winnings. Over the long run. You just can't go to a cash table, play for an hour, and lose a bit and go, all this sucks. You know, this strategy has been designed and developed to make you a positive EV, a positive profitable poker player over the long run. You're gonna have your variance. King ten, yeah, I would have raised if there wasn't, yeah, a preflop razor, so. King four, um. That's the thing, is you need a large enough sample size to be able to accurately judge your performance. You can't just do this off of a hundred hands. One night of playing poker, we're talking thousands, if not tens of thousands of hands. Okay. So pocket six is under the gun, it's a fold. Pocket sixes, dealer button, fold it to you, it's a raise. Position. Extremely important. So half pot. So again, for me, preflop, I got my ranges down pat, I you know, I'm probably, I'd say eighty-five, ninety percent sure of which hands I play preflop, but it's spots like this. Okay? Pocket sixes, two overpairs, checked to me. So poker snowy's saying make small quarter pot. Yeah, quarter pot bet, continuation bet. This is more, not necessarily to win the hand, but just to get information. If you get called, and they're calling with medium pocket pair, they may be calling with an ace, they may be calling with a flush draw, but if they're calling with this board texture, they probably got JP. They're not calling with a pair of twos. They're calling if they have an ace, they're calling if they have an eight, they're calling if they have a flush draw, and in this case, the flush draw might actually have more equity than your pair of sixes. Okay? Now that they call that, see poker snowy's going to say, hey, check it down, you're probably beat at this point. Check it down. So c-bet small, just for information. You're not c-betting to try to win the pot. You know, if he had, you know, whatever, ten, seven, or king. Six. He would fold, or they would fold, he, she, it, them, that, they would fold. But they called my small c-bet, meaning they've got something, either a draw, or an ace. Or an eight. So we need to check it down. They checked again. I bet you they got a busted, busted flush draw. There it is. Busted flush draw. This is why I love this program. It's the post-flop play. Pre-flop, anyone can have their ranges, they can have their charts, and know what to do, pre-flop. But post-flop, knowing what to do. So what I've seen here, small continuation bets to figure out where you're at. And if they call. Either they got you beat by a little bit, or they're on a drawing end. Let's keep playing, let's see if we can get to more draws, or more draws, more flops. Cards like this, we're not going to see very many flops. Three, no. Ace four, horse not. King ten, hmm, maybe? No. Under the gun, no. Two five big blind, no. Now, I have seen the ranges. That this program uses, Poker Snowy. And they do incorporate bluffs. Um in this program, so it isn't just. Straight, if you've got it, bet, if you don't, fold. There are some bluffs in this one. So you can't just. You know. Hey, they re, they raise, and here's a pre-flop raise, three bet. You can't go, oh, well, they're three betting, cause they got something. They might three bet as a bluff. That is in their ranges, that is in the program's ability. So yeah, here. Again, if I was in a real cash game, folded around to me in the dealer button, ace six, I would definitely be raising. Half pot, sure. My standard raise, here's your three. Oh, look at this. Max Fletcher. Max Fletcher, Peter Griffin. Max Fletcher. Um. So I have a. Nut. Flush. Draw. You cannot fold this hand. And actually, what Poker Snowy is saying is. Raise, not by much. Just a little bit more than a min raise. Oh, and they folded, interesting. So they were probably c-betting, cause they were the pre-flop aggressor, right? Were they? Can't remember. Um. Okay, five, seven fold. A three fold. Ace, king, we are going to re-raise, yep, pot sized re-raise. Pot size is gonna be seventy plus the bet, plus the same size raise, eighty plus him about fifty. Or about four X. And a half four X. Yeah, and when you're three betting, you should be three to four times the bet, yeah, that's right. And they fold. So here we're going, now we're up six forty-two. Pretty decent at a ten twenty cent table. Wow. So obviously, you know. Nine, three, that's a fold. You know, real obvious positions, like nine, four button, yeah, we're not playing that. Anybody who's got any poker knowledge or poker experience might come play, but a hand like this. If they fold around, you're gonna cut off king nine. You know, you're like, eh. Straight potential. Nine, ten, jack, queen, king. King's a pretty good, you know, one card. You know, it's marginal, seventy-nine percent of the time should fold, raise twenty-one percent of the time. But. You're not gonna make any money playing these cards. You see the EV over the long run. Both folding and raising are the same, so why play this hand? If, even if you raise the twenty-one percent of the time, you're not gonna make anything. In the long run. You play a hundred hands, raises twenty-one percent of the time, you're still not making anything, so. Fold it. You know, especially if you're playing Zoom poker, and you just fold, and you're right to the next hand, you don't have to sit there bored at a regular cash game. Fold and move on. Or if you're at a cash game or in a tournament. Fold, be patient, leave for good cards. Ace four, not playing it. King three, no. Ace four, no. Ace king, yeah. Ray. We'll raise half pot. Cause I don't have a point four pot. Okay. So I've been in this spot before. Where you get three bet with ace king. And then re-raising, this really makes me nervous. Cause what are they three betting with? Aces, kings, queens, jacks, even if they got queens. If they got queens, they're sixty. They got a sixty percent chance of winning, wow, fifty-five, forty-five, so it's almost a flip. Okay. Wow, we got a pot sized three bet. So that's one, six, five, three. That's a three and a half X three bet. And if they got queens, they're still the favorite. Jacks. Still the favorite. Let's just hope they got ace queen. Hmm. Isn't this interesting? So we missed a flop. We hit their range really hard, you might have ace, jack, they might even have jacks. So yeah, Snowy's saying, check it down. We're in trouble. Minimize your losses. They checked. What does Snowy seven have? Why would they check? If they had ace, jack. They had three jacks, they would have bet. Queens, they would have bet. Pocket tens? But anyways, yeah, in this spot. Saying make a small quarter sized bet. I think they got a pocket pair. Either nines or tens. Okay, well, there's a draw on the table, ace, two, three, four, five, they definitely don't have four or five. Uh. I think they've got either nines or tens. Or ace queen. Oh, look at that, saying go all in. Percent of the time you go all in. Yeah, cause if they had jacks, they definitely didn't play it aggressive enough. I think they got ace, queen. Tens or nines, so I got them beat. Quarter sized bet, hundred percent of the time. Yeah, I would value bet in this spot for sure. And if he re-raised, well. So there's two reasons. To make a bet. For value. So that a worse hand calls you. Or you bet to make a better hand fold. Now what better hand would fold? If they had three jacks, would they fold? To a four dollar bet into sixteen, no. Well, they would definitely call. What is a better hand? Would they fold to? Yeah, you know what, that's why it's saying check, because there isn't a better hand they would fold to. You got three jacks. You're gonna re-raise or call and I lose. So the second reason you bet is to get a worse hand to call you. So ace, queen, would ace, queen, would ace, queen call a four dollar bet? Yes, they would. And I don't think they've got three jacks. I think they've got ace, queen, tens or nines. So if you had ace, queen, tens or nines, would you call a small four dollar bet? Yes, you would. Yes, you would. Processing that last hand. Hmm. Cause they've pocket kings, and those two jacks came up, they were worried I had the jack. So my quarter sized bet on the river then. Where I value bet, hoping a worse hand would call. The kings were the worst hand, cause I had the ace. Called. I think I played that really well. I was beat on the flop. Anyways, well. If you look now, after two hundred fifty-seven hands, I'm up eighteen dollars, I've almost made a hundred percent ROI. After two hundred fifty-seven hands, so. If you can stick to a straight GTO style. Playing against perfect computer opponents. I can get a hundred percent ROI after two hundred fifty-seven hands, we're close to a hundred percent. So if you're playing. Real people. At cash games, whether it's live or online. Whenever they make mistakes, you're just gonna make even more. Just gotta play a lot of. Programs like this, and play a lot of hands, and just. Get familiar, and instinctively know. Whether you need to fold, call, or raise, and then the most important part that I've learned. With this GTO strategy, is when you are gonna raise, how much? That's just as important as deciding to raise. Fold, call, it's easy. Folding, you don't have to worry about your bet size, calling, you don't have to worry about your bet size. Raising, you gotta know how much to raise. It's key. Cause whatever you raise determines the pot odds for your opponent. Whether they're going to call those odds, whether they're going to raise against those odds, or whether they're gonna fold. And that, when you raise. You're trying to get your opponent to do a certain thing based on the odds that you gave them. If you want them to fold, you're gonna bet higher, if you want them to call, you're gonna bet lower. Or if you just wanna. Screw with your head. You do the opposite. For the most part. Online cash games. Your betting, your bet sizing is to influence them to do a certain thing. Generally, the big bet sizes. Get them to fold. Small bet sizes to get them to call. Okay. Uh we are. An hour and forty-five minutes into this, we're gonna go to two hours. And we're gonna call it a night. If only we had this little Poker Snowy's advice at real tables, eh? That would be unfair. We want to keep things fair at the table. So all we can do. Is use programs like this, and. Through repetition. Like anything else in life. Instinctively learn. What to do, see, king, queen, I would raise, yeah? A fourth. Oh, sorry, uh point four of a pot. Cause you know, those three cents apparently makes quite the difference. King ten. Oh, see, I was about to raise here. What about the last hand, how did I? Last hand I had. Had king, queen. Offsuit. When I raised, king ten offsuit, under the gun, no, okay. Yeah, king queen's definitely better. Nine eight, with aggression ahead of me, that's fold. King eight's gonna be a fo. No, it's not. So fold around to me, small blind, obviously the king. It means big blind. Pot sized bet, better steal it. Oh, I'm old. Pass my bedtime. Um. Yeah, I missed the flops, it's gonna be a check. I would normally fold here. So why are we calling here? I normally wouldn't, I'd be folding. Not that calling is a massively positive EV play anyways, but it is the best play. Okay, we'll call. Now we're definitely folding, we're gonna check. Interesting. So what he was bluffing? Pot sized bet, huh? It's a big bet. What are we bluffing at? We didn't bet the turn. So what are we? We're saying we have two five? I don't know what we're bluffing at, it's definitely a bluff. It worked? Interesting. Uh, okay, we're gonna go, what are we here, queen nine fold, we're gonna go to three hundred hands. And then before we finish up. Uh half sized pot bet, ace, yeah. Um. Ooh, that's a good flop. Good flop, pot sized bet, yep. Pot sized bet. Um. Another cool thing about this Poker Snowy is after your. Um session, whether it's live at a table, or just at the Poker Snowy program, you can analyze. Um how you've played, and it'll give you an overall summary. Uh, yeah. Now, I've been following what Poker Snowy has suggested, um I can turn this off. So that I can just play the cards how I see fit, and then I can analyze my game afterwards. Uh fold, um but for this stream, um. I was giving the live advice, so I could see. Real time. What the correct move was to kind of learn, but you can play a cash game, or you can import your own hands. real time what the correct move was to kind of learn but you can play a cash game or you can import your own hands into the program and have it analyze your two three four hundred hands or thousand hands however you played and it'll tell you um how well you played and then where your mistakes were so we'll get through this ah queen ten half pot raise um yeah we'll get through these two hundred hands and then I will show you the summary page after hey usually ace eight out with raise suited under the gun but um I should not interesting okay so small blind raised me so snowy is assuming that they're trying to steal my blinds so it is actually saying re-raise them because chances are they're just trying to steal your blinds with any two cards so if we put pressure on them they can't call with seven two or ten five or or they could call now obviously they're gonna check to the preflop aggressor and then it's saying give up the betting lead because we got nothing they're gonna bet no they didn't so after two checks we're gonna take a stab at this pot and they still call what do they have bet you they got a pocket pair like sevens hmm that top pair on the flop which makes sense even though they had top pair they checked it to me because it's a pre-flop aggressor yeah 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 that makes sense okay that makes sense alright queen two we're gonna fold king queen if it folds around to us we will raise yep half pot we're gonna fold with three bets king eight not a playable hand nine two not a playable hand ten six not a playable hand four five I don't have a gun oh yeah sorry the five four is your bluffing hand that's right because everyone else is playing like aces and queens and kings and jacks broadway cards and you can sometimes steal a five four and you know what for this one sure let's raise let's see what happens here let's see if we get a small pair on the board or we just take it down a jacks we will play for sure no action at all actually that's kind of similar a zoom game because everybody waits for premium hands there's a lot of folding that goes on alright queen nine nope okay five more hands ace four no small blind though everyone folds around to us so we can rate that try to steal it or you re-raise and look up sorry I got caught seven two offsuit what do you think king five new ace queen yes alright so we're gonna raise half pot see it likes these small bets normally I would go three X this is saying min raise plus a wee bit so it'd be two and a half times instead of three alright hand three hundred fold we are done so after you are done your session you can close poker snowy within a few minutes your session will appear in the import manager for further analysis so alright well might take a second to pop up there it is here it comes you see this that didn't work alright that'll pop up in a second here just give it a moment so three hundred hands right so I mean we were analyzing our hands real time so we could see what the proper moves were but you can play cash game without any advice just go off your instincts what you think would be appropriate oh this is so terrible I'm sorry um anyways yes you can um play the poker snowy cash game or tournaments or you can import your own files and analyze the hands after the fact so we can do a view analysis load the hands here we go and then give you a summary errors so it's saying I played at an extraterrestrial level that's because I was following live what poker snowy saying I should do so I played the perfect GTO style um I made a fifteen dollar ninety two cent profit on three hundred hands which is fantastic I mean if you could do that in real life uh you can make a lot of money playing poker um obviously I made no blunders uh I did make a few errors yeah preflop because I you know when I was saying that I should raise preflop point four and I raised a point five uh of a pot you know that's where it's going hey you made a few errors yeah here five four so this was yeah one of the last hands this is hand two ninety two remember we wanted to give it a try so you can analyze your hand after the fact and here it says it tells you right here you sit in early position uh with many players behind you therefore you need to play tight you need at least jack ten suited to open the pot I re-raised saying no you know even though I raised half pot so that's why it's saying I made a mistake I raised forty five cents instead of forty two cents if I would have raised forty two cents you know forty six percent of the time that's a correct play so that's the one instance where it said hey you know you made an error small error but you made an error um and actually I think I've got I've got some real hands here this was from the tournament I played a few weeks ago yeah so I can actually pull this up yeah here here's an actual live tournament that I played the tournaments are a little different than cash games so you can't really take poker snowy you know verbatim for what you did but uh the tournament that I played since I played an expert level um how many blunders did I make blunders are like really big I made twenty six really bad mistakes out of the three hundred fifty nine hands I made so it is nice that after the fact you can go take a look and like for instance here pocket tens with an eight nine jack board so I got a gut shot with one over card um I bet fifteen hundred chips and poker snowy says hey GTO style wrong move I should have checked one hundred percent of the time or made a quarter size bet quarter size pot bet I made a half pot bet which they said is completely wrong so you can see here you can analyze your actual live hands that you do at live tables and see where you've made some mistakes now wait where is this now I lost this hand see the ace jack but sort of should have checked it down because of the overbear and my gut shot not a good betting move although on the river I did check oh we see what happened here I checked opponent bet and I still called terrible move maybe I had a read on that player thinking that maybe they didn't have the jack I don't know it's a cool little program I'm not affiliated with them at all or anything it's just like it's a cool program that I use um it's definitely improved my game uh I've been a much more profitable poker player since I've uh bought this program uh I think it runs for a hundred bucks US for the game and then there's an advanced version for I think two fifty uh but in my opinion it's uh money well spent uh it teaches you a lot about the GTO strategy and really core fundamentals of poker so it's been a real improvement in my game and it's just kind of fun you know on a night where you don't feel like gambling your real money to go and practice on a poker site like this or a poker program like this uh I highly recommend it so uh yeah again I'm not affiliated with them just a cool program that I use to improve my game maybe can improve yours so if you've been watching the stream thank you very much for watching if you're watching this on YouTube please hit like subscribe if you really enjoy this stuff uh let me know if you enjoy this kind of type of content and I'll play more of this poker snowy and post more videos of this so uh again thanks again for watching thanks again for all the support and we will catch you in the next stream okay take care have a good night